All right, I would like to call to order the September 16th Milford City Council meeting. Can I please have the Boy Scouts from Troop 502 come up here to lead us in the pledge? And we'll also have a moment of silence and please just prayers for our country. Start us off? Thank you. Thank you. Jackie, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Evans.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Velardo. Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Here.
That takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion to excuse Mr. Velardo.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mayor Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. That takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from September 2nd?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
And that takes us to financial statements. So I have a motion to receive the August 2025 financial report.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
And that takes us to our public comment section. If you are going to make a public comment, just please state your name and address for the record and remember to speak into the microphone. So if anyone would like to come up and make a comment?
Donna Lucky, 910 Wallace. I thought I heard, listening from home, something about a possible gas aggregate in the city of Milford. Did I not hear that?
That is correct. So I believe it was last meeting or the meeting before, we passed an electric aggregation contract, but it's only for city-owned properties. So it's, any of the residents or the businesses, they don't take part in that. It's simply city-owned properties.
Okay, okay. Next, why are they replacing all the sidewalks on Lila?
So that is a great project that we were able to take advantage of. It was through a, we had a 50% match. It was a grant through the OKI, which is a transportation partner we have. And essentially what it was is to address the sidewalks that were in bad repair or did not meet ADA compliance. So that is what is going to be completed on both Lila and Main Street.
So that was a lot of taxpayer money that went into a sidewalk that hardly ever gets walked on.
Well, like I said, this was funded through not only the city of Milford, but other partners with that project. So it was a 50-50 grant and we felt that there was a need. And once again, there was a lot of sections that simply did not meet ADA compliance. And they are traveled certainly to the, to good use, I see. But we also are adding a sidewalk on Lila as well to help with the crossing. So we felt that this was a good project.
So you then, you did not feel that getting any pavement repaired on Wallace falls under that same category? That street is a mess.
Well, I don't disagree with you. As I stated before, we're replacing the water tower.
I realize that.
And we said, once that water tower is in place, then we will address Wallace Avenue. So we hear you. We understand it's in bad shape. But we are going to have a lot of heavy equipment on that road. And there's going to be damage that takes place to that road. So to replace that in advance of something that we know is going to cause harm, I believe would not be fiscally responsible.
So in the meantime, all of us as residents and who live up there have to put up with that day after day. And yet you had money to spend on a sidewalk that only occasionally gets used. I did ask you-
The sidewalk project was approved like a couple of years ago.
Several years ago. And that includes the crosswalks. So that's really going to help residents cross safely from, from across the street to be able to get to the grocery store and essential services.
Yeah. I did ask Ben weeks ago for a timeline, something that at least the rest of us residents could sort of go by, something, you know, that we could see into the future when this might be finished. But he never answered me.
Well, one, Benjamin. Two, when I receive a timeline, I can give it to you. I don't have an answer on that. So that's why I cannot respond to you.
I, that would have been nice to get that response. Sorry, I don't have that information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Provided in council's packet is my city manager report. Not a whole lot of items to touch on. Certainly a lot of leadership academies that I've been taking part in and certainly a good opportunity to improve my skills. Other than that, I attended a fall Claremont County Port meeting, Port Authority meeting. That's a good partnership that the city of Milford is continually trying to nurture. They are a huge partner with economic development. So to be able to hear more about the housing study they conducted and other projects going on in the county, that was very insightful. Other than that, unless there's any questions, that is all I have.
Right, thank you. That takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. You should have my August monthly report. Happy to answer any questions you have on that. Otherwise, I would like to announce that at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing in three new officers. These are not additional positions. These are replacement positions as we've had some retirements and resignations. Tomorrow, we're looking forward to releasing a very well-done crosswalk safety PSA that was donated to us by a local resident, John Lucas, who owns Management Essentials, a local company. So we're really excited about that. We'll have that on our website and also on our social media platforms. And lastly, I'd like to unveil our newest Citizens' Police Academy photo. Sergeant Chastain gave me several suggestions on how we could improve our CPA, one of which was kind of up in our game a little bit on our class photo. And you can see-
Nancy.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
We've got a great-looking class. We'll have this in the hallway out here in the near future.
All right, that's awesome. Thank you very much. That takes us to Chief Baird and Fire and EMS.
Good evening, everyone. I'll refer you. I saw the city manager's report includes all the department head reports, including ours. So I'll refer you to that. I would just like to comment that I was just thrilled with the turnout for the 9/11 service last Thursday. And I want to thank all the people who participated, Chief Mills and a lot of people, Mayor Evans. We, I just basically, other than, you know, the mayor opening things up, I just start thinking of names who didn't do it last year. And that's where it goes as far as how we come up with the people who participate. There's no, there's no science to it at all. But I like representing not just Milford, but the Milford area at this service. But for those who were able, who were able to make it, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I really don't have anything else. I know Chief Miller is going to be available to you for the, for the AED project discussion. So we'll be right here. Thank you.
All right. Again, thank you for the wonderful service that you put on. All right, that takes us to council comments.
All right. I would make a motion pursuant to, in accordance with Section 3.052 of the Milford City Charter, 121.22G2, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at competitive bidding if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personnel, private interest, or personal private interest is at first to the general public interest. Second.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
All right, so we will go into executive session and we'll return to continue the committee of the whole agenda.
To adjourn the executive session.
And all in favor, or yes. Now do I have a motion to open our committee, oh, sorry, council comments?
Yeah, can I make-
Yes.
Couple of quick announcements from Parks and Rec Commission. One, we have recommended the purchase of an outdoor grill, a bigger one that would sit near Riverside 2 Shelter. So it's a little more accessible. It's going to be within fire code regulations. But anyway, that was something that we had talked about. And we're also doing park cleanups. And we're starting with Carriageway Park this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, just helping maintenance with weeds and brush and trash. And our goal is to do one every month, so.
That's awesome.
And then Farmer's Market's ending up. And Fall Fest is October 4th.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Also, I wanted to mention one of the best days in Milford. Art Affair takes over downtown Milford on Saturday, or yeah, Saturday, September 27th, starting at 11:00. So it was a great day downtown. All right, now do I have a motion to enter into our committee of the whole meeting?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, so we'll start off the meeting with a public comment section. Is there anyone who wants to comment on a topic that's under our committee of the whole meeting? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda is a amended appropriation ordinance listed within the packet as the fourth amended appropriations. A lot of, it's really nothing major. We didn't have enough and majority of the line items for the insurance. So that is the majority of it. One thing I do want to point out is in the manager tax incentives, we've got two or three incentives, one of which ends next year. They've already paid their property tax and, and we've had issues with, with these agreements. So really what I'm trying to do is we've got plenty of money left over from other areas. I really just want to close out these agreements so we can be done with them and, and just have a clean slate. So that's the $55,654.16. Some of the other ones I wanted to point out, professional services in the water fund, that is for attorney fees. The city has received PFAS settlement money. And although we are not directly taking or paying the attorney fees, it was deducted from our lawsuit amounts. That's something that we have to reflect. So we're not actually paying that $147, almost $148,000. Lastly, what I wanted to point out as well is the water fund and wastewater fund. At the beginning of the year, we sent or we made a, passed an ordinance to send all the revenues. Before, previously, we had a portion go to water in the water account, water operating and water capital. To me, I like to simplify things. So to have both accounts, I think is unnecessary. I'd like to keep it into one fund. We can then put capital, a capital outlay, for example, line item within the water fund and still accomplish the same thing. What we have done is we're trying to ride down some of that balance. So for example, wastewater, we had to do that lift station, the Happy Hollow Lift Station. That was $110,000. We, of course, didn't budget for that. We had to take that out of the water account. So we've been able to draw some of that down. But the transfers, what that essentially, or what that effectively does is that allows us to sort of net out the accounts and then we can fully transition to the operating. So you'll see a lot of this really in, in full effect with the new budget. And we're working on that now. So we're going to do two, two or three budgets, probably the utility funds in advance of the workshop, well, probably it'll be tied into the workshop, but in advance of actually passing the budget. So that way I can get council's blessing on, hey, this is sort of the new, the new look of the budget. This is, this is how the structure. So that way I can get the blessing from council. But also, it's important to have the utility funds sort of work in conjunction with the rate study that we completed and ensure that whatever we pass is reflected within that budget. So they really are working hand in hand in terms of, hey, this is the new structure. This is the new look. But also, you know, this rate study, we have to make a decision on because that is going to affect our budget. So if we do nothing, then, you know, we got a plan. If we do something, we got a plan for that as well. So all of these are rather insubstantial. But if there's any further questions, I can certainly answer them. I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance amending appropriation ordinances 24-317, 25-340, 25-351, and 25-371 in the amounts specified in the, in the amended appropriation.
Second.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Pitney Bowes renewal lease for the mailing postage meter. Ms. Jackie's a hard negotiator, so she actually got us a better deal than what we're paying now. It's saving us a little bit of money. She highlighted the differences. This is something that, you know, we utilize quite often, nuisance properties. Anytime we're mailing something out, we need the postage. So this is simply a renewal of the current contract, with the exception it's at a lower rate.
How long is this renewal good for?
Thirty-six months.
I would make a motion recommending that law director draft an ordinance authoring, authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for SendPro C Auto Mailing Postage Meter.
Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a renewal of the broadband contract. We have continually had discussions about improving our technology here. We also continually have issues with our technology. So after further review, we were operating under a, a contract and not to get too technical, but it's, it was 50 megabits per second, which is extremely low. I mean, it's, it's very, very low. So we received a special offer. So at a very marginal increase, we're going to increase it to one gig, which we believe will be sufficient. You know, we continue to put more and more in the cloud. We utilize more of the internet, live streaming, et cetera. It's important to have adequate broadband to, to utilize those services. So this is simply, this contract did, would have expired in February, but in order to get the special pricing, we need to pass it now. And that will get us on our way to improving some of our technology needs.
This is a 36-month agreement, is that correct?
That is correct.
I would make a motion recommending the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spectrum broadband to increase broadband for City Hall.
Second.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the purchase of AEDs for city-owned parks in City Hall. This was a discussion we had at last council meeting. And I simply wasn't prepared. So I apologize for the, for the lack of preparedness there. But we had three options. After further review of the options, I've, I've really, I guess, resubmitted. It's sort of in conjunction with two. I know the fire department really put a lot of effort and work into this. And they simply just said here, this is the information presented. So I appreciate their help on this. But really what I was looking at here is, we were looking at the parks. I really liked the maintenance plan, but we also wanted the stand. So this is really a combination of both. We've got the AEDs through Centos with their, with their maintenance plan. So we've got three at the parks. My, my thoughts were five points, Riverside 2, and then the, by the service department there. I thought those were probably, those had the most traffic between the parks. And that could be a start. And then maybe next year, we look to incorporate the other parks to make sure we've got all of them. But I thought that was a good start. Through the discussion, she also reviewed the, the City Hall AED, and that was expired. So we need to get a, an AED for City Hall. So within the email, you'll see the parks, the monthly costs, yearly costs. You'll see the, for the parks in City Hall. And then you'll see the cost for the cabinet and the cabinet stands. The only thing that is outstanding is the electric and the concrete pad, which Centos, you know, won't do. That, that'll be something we do internally and handle internally. But this is, this is my recommendation to council. I think it fully encompasses everything we discussed last meeting. And I know that there's some urgency behind this, so that way we can get these in the parks. So this is my recommendation.
Is this for the parks? Is that cost for all three, or is that each?
Correct. It's one, it's $135 per AED.
Okay. What about City Hall? Because I know we have one down here. Is there one upstairs?
The one upstairs is the one that was expired.
Okay, this one's okay. Or do we need two?
To my knowledge, it's okay.
Okay.
If it's not, then I'll, I'll come back and make an amendment. But it's my, my understanding is that it's not expired.
So and again, just to be clear, this would cover three parks for now and City Hall. And then we could look at putting into the other parks next year, right?
That is correct.
I would absolutely be thrilled to make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Centos for the purchase of AEDs for city-owned parks in City Hall.
Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is amending Section 1315 of the Milford Codified Ordinances. This codified ordinance section has to relate to public nuisances. What we're looking or effectively changing here is we're bringing this internally instead of having our building inspector, which is outsourced currently. Bringing it internally gives us a little bit more discretion and more abilities to better enforce this section. It also makes it and brings it really more in compliance with best practices. So within the packet itself, you'll see the redlined version. So you can see the differences. But we believe that this is a measure that needs to be taken to increase operational efficiency and really the effectiveness of being able to enforce this ordinance.
I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance amending Section 1315 of the Milford Codified Ordinances.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the OPWC applications. The city of Milford plans to, and I don't have anything in the packet. It's, it's ordinances that I hope council makes a recommendation to pass, simply allowing us to participate in the program. We plan on submitting for sewer lining on State Route 28. That is the only area left in town that hasn't received sewer lining. Obviously, earlier this year, we experienced troubles with the sewer infrastructure. And it's, it's essential that we fix the, the existing infrastructure. So that's about a $500,000 total cost. We're looking to contribute $100,000 towards that. The second, being a generator for the State Route 28 lift station. What that does is that helps with feeding water to the Wallace Avenue Water Tower. Currently, if the electric is out on that side of town, we don't have the ability to pump water into the water tower, which causes an issue for us. So we need backup with that, which is why we need a generator for that area. That, that, that is something that we're going to do, like a 50-50 grant and local contribution. We, we budgeted for this exact item earlier this year. And we had a grant that fell through. So this is something that we've planned for, but we're just hoping to sort of push it in next year and hopefully get some funding to offset that cost. But either way, it is a necessity for us to help with the, the operations.
I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing tech engineering to prepare and submit an application on behalf of the city of Milford to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement Program.
Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a donation to Valley View. I wanted to add this to committee of the whole. This is, the request is well under my spending limit, but I, I wanted to really take a stance on, I believe, the importance that Valley View brings to us as a community. I've been here almost a year in December. And one of the things that has stood out the most is how passionate people are with the parks and, and that of green space. And I think Valley View, although it's not a city-owned property, I think they bring tremendous value to us as a community with their, their offerings, the trails, the programming. And, you know, I've done what I can to sort of get to know Valley View and Vanessa. And, you know, I just been, I've been very impressed and I'm excited to see what the future looks like for Valley View. I know that they continue to think outside the box. And so I just wanted to formally get council's blessing on, on this donation because, once again, I think this is a tremendous asset that we, as the city of Milford, have within the community. Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. And then next, this is the easiest item. I would like to get council's thoughts on a budget work session or workshop. We were looking at the last October, the week of October 20th. Very last week, excuse me. Okay, so either the week of October 13th or the week of October 27th. If it's the week of October 27th, it would have to be towards the tail end, as I will be at a city manager conference. But this, this will be a good opportunity, you know, to discuss what next year's budget looks like. And that way, we can run it by council if there's any changes that need to be made. The process that I typically follow is, you know, I present this to council. We get feedback. At that point, we will have met with the department heads. I do like to, to meet with the mayor and council individually. So that way, sometimes it's a little bit harder when you're up here and, and to ask questions. And there's things that you don't always think about on the spot. So I like to present that. But it's kind of a good opportunity for me to work with council and ensure that we're all on the same page. So I wanted to throw that out to council for, once again, the week of October 13th or the 27th to see. And I know Mr. Velardo is not here, so we're going to be missing one person. But-
See, in the past, we've tried to do Tuesdays just because it's, it's a night everyone's kind of already committed.
Okay.
I don't know. You won't be here the 28th?
I, well, I can, I can make it work. I don't think, I don't think I booked a flight yet.
You also, like, to your point, the biggest fan of budget work sessions is not here tonight, right? So, yeah, but we have always tried to stick to a Tuesday.
Okay.
If not, what about the 29th?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll make it work. I mean, I gotta, I gotta do my job. So either 14th, 21st, or 28th.
The 29th, would you guys be available?
Can be. My preference would be the week of the 13th.
Oh, we could do that.
Because I flip my store that week, the 29th, and I'm usually there. But I don't have to be. But if we could do it earlier week.
About the 14th?
The 14th would be my personal preference.
No, I, I think that we can get a very solid first draft done by the-
Because I believe we do not have planning commission that night, so.
Oh, forgot about that.
As of now, this, I thought he said no.
I like that date.
The 14th? Okay. So we'll pencil it in for now. I'll confirm with Mr. Velardo to sure he can make it. And then I'll send a confirmation.
Six o'clock, 5 o'clock? Can't remember.
You did 5 to 9, or 6 to 9, or?
I thought it was 5.
I thought it was like 5.
5 to 8 would be the most useful for me because there's a feeding time at 9. So if we can try to be out here by 8.
We get it done in three hours?
Mine's 8.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm sure you cried just as loud as my three-month-old.
All right, so the 14th will pencil in at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Did I hear that correctly?
Hmm.
All right. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn from our committee of the whole meeting?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
That takes us to new business, Mr. Pacheco and ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 25-392, an ordinance amending appropriation ordinances 24-317, 25-340, 25-351, and 25- 25-351, and 25-371, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city finance director to amend appropriation ordinances 24-317, 25-340, 25-351, and 25-371 by increasing, decreasing individual items as set forth and listed on the chart attached here too and fully incorporated herein as provided in Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Set amount is total $291,892.14. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 11.05 and 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance requires only one reading and shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ordinance number 25-393, an ordinance authorizing TEC engineering to prepare and to submit an application on behalf of the city of Milford to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program, whereas state capital improvement program provides financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure, and whereas the city of Milford is planning to make capital improvements to State Route 28 sewer infrastructure, and whereas the above referenced infrastructure improvement is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the OPWC programs, now therefore be resolved by the city, by the council of the city of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City council hereby authorizes TEC engineering to apply to the OPWC for funds as described above. Section 2, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Section 3, pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
A motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-393, an ordinance authorizing TEC engineering to prepare and to submit an application on behalf of the city of Milford to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 25-394, an ordinance authorizing TEC engineering to prepare and submit an application on behalf of the city of Milford to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program, whereas state capital improvement program provides financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure, and whereas the city of Milford is planning to make capital improvements and needs to purchase, and needs to purchase a generator for the State Route 28 lift station, and whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the OPWC programs, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. TEC engineering is hereby authorized to apply to the OPWC for funds as described above to help purchase any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Section 3, pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance should be effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-394, an ordinance authorizing TEC engineering to prepare and submit an application on behalf of the city of Milford to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-395, an ordinance amending chapter 1315 of the codified ordinances of the city of Milford, whereas chapter 1315 of the codified ordinances of the city of Milford currently has a section concerning nuisance enforcement, and whereas city staff recommends changes to such nuisance enforcement provisions to reflect best practices, to increase operational efficiency, and to provide more tools to move more quickly addressed and remedy nuisance conditions in the city, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City council hereby approves the attached changes to chapter 1315 of the codified ordinances as set forth in Exhibit A. The attached document is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance should become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-395, an ordinance amending chapter 1315 of the codified ordinances of the city of Milford.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-396, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Centos for the purchase of AEDs for city-owned parks in City Hall, whereas the city of Milford would like to purchase three AEDs for city-owned parks at a price not to exceed $135 per month per device, whereas the city of Milford would like to purchase one AED for City Hall at a price not to exceed $135 per month per device. And whereas the city of Milford intends to enter into the five-year maintenance agreement with Centos for the maintenance for all AEDs purchased under this agreement, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City council hereby authorizes the city manager to purchase the necessary AEDs from Centos and to sign all necessary documents to effectuate such purchases, including the maintenance agreement. The attached agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-397, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spectrum broadband to increase broadband for City Hall, whereas the city, whereas the city of Milford has experienced significant difficulty with technology due to the lack of broadband currently available at City Hall, and whereas existing contract with Spectrum expires in 2026. However, in order to address the existing issues at hand and to secure special pricing for continued and improved service, the city desires to renew the contract earlier, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City council hereby authorizes the city manager to renew the lease with Spectrum for the purposes of increasing broadband capability at City Hall. The attached lease is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-397, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spectrum broadband to increase broadband for City Hall.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-398, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for a send-pro-C auto mailing postage meter, whereas the city of Milford is nearing the end of the existing lease with Pitney Bowes for the city's send-pro-C auto mailing postage meter, whereas the city of Milford plans to renew the lease at a lower rate than the previous lease, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. City council hereby authorizes the city manager to renew the lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for a send-pro-C auto mailing postage meter. The attached lease is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Sections 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-398, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for a send-pro-C auto mailing postage meter.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could have a moment, please? This is roughly my third anniversary of being with the city, which I've been honored to do, and I thank you all for your trust in me. You do a great job, particularly in nowadays when people expect that you do more with less and even more with even less er. And so I appreciate being able to represent you. I'm proud to wear Milford on my patch, if you will, on my shoulder, and I do want to thank, I know a couple of you are not running again, you helped hire me, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I thank you, and I thank you. It's been my honor to serve with you. I know we're not done yet, thankfully. And so I'll have, I'll have more choice words for you at the appropriate time. But all I ask is, I don't need the chambers renamed, I would just like a little refrigerator with a Diet Coke somewhere, and then we're good to go.
All right.
In all seriousness, thank you all for the opportunity to work with you, and I'm three years and going on, you know, more than three after that. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, old business?
Mayor, if I will, yes, three years going on 30, Brian. Mr. Velardo, I think, is watching the meeting on vacation, and I got a text message from him stating that he's only available for the week of the 13th on the 16th or 17th, and then the following week, the week of the 27th, he's only available on October 27th or the 30th. If we can't make that work, then we can aim for the first week in November, but I...
Vacation the whole week.
Okay, then, I really don't want to put, I really want this, I always aim for the budget to be passed the last meeting in November, so...
16? So what do you say, the 16th?
16.
I'm not going to do Friday, I hate to say.
Yes, the 16th.
It's a home Bengals game, too.
Ooh, is the 16th is? Oh, never mind. I can't do that then.
Can we do it at the Bengals game?
Yes.
October, Monday, you're out of town, the Monday of the 27th?
I can very well just not go to this conference, and I promise that my job is a bigger priority than me going to a conference, so I can do the 27th. The only thing we've booked is a hotel so far, I believe, so we will just simply cancel that if the 27th works for everyone.
I can go to the city manager conference.
Yes.
I think I can.
It'd be a little thrown off, bit of a difference here, but...
Certainly think we're the same age.
It's the hair.
I'd say that or the 30th, but I don't know about the 30th.
I can go either.
Oh, no, not the 30th. I'd say I'd rather not do the 30th.
So the 27th, then? Does that work?
Be sure you're okay to miss your conference.
Yep.
Thanks for taking one for the team, yeah.
My pleasure. All right, so the 27th at 5:00 PM.
Works for me?
All right, deal.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, I think that's everything. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Yes. Come up to the podium if you don't mind, just so it's on record. Thank you.
My name is Gary Roma, and on behalf of myself, my wife, Nancy, our son, Dan, and all our family, we just wanted to thank Huma Evans, Benjamin, city manager, Jeez Miles Miller, for your rapidly getting the AED program to all the city parks, and I think it's a great decision, and it will be a great given hopefully in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming.